Yeah, you're just getting a taste of empty nesting.
I like it.
It can be about me.
You're on air?
Absolutely. It goes back to what it was like before we had kids.
Okay, we have to fake it.
As it should be.
That was the calling the meeting to order. I'm going to call the Monday, March 2 city council regular meeting to order. And to start off, we will be going into an executive session. For anyone who may not be aware, an executive session is a closed session of the council that can be called for certain reasons, usually to discuss confidential information. Action cannot be taken in an executive session. This executive session this evening will be to discuss pending potential litigation per RCW 42.30 point 110, Pran I. The item is expected to last 30 minutes. I'm just taking a look at city administrator, 30 minutes? 30 minutes. Action is anticipated to follow in open session. So we will now be recessing into executive session at 7:01.
Thank you all for waiting and being patient as we had our executive session prior to start of our regular meeting but we are now out of executive session, back in regular session and we will be proceeding with the motion out of our executive session. Do I have somebody making a motion? Council President Hunt.
I move to authorize the mayor to enter into a settlement agreement with American Tower on the terms discussed within the executive session.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you. So welcome. We'll start our meeting as usual with the pledge of allegiance and if you'd like to join the council and I, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda this evening is audience comments and this is your time to address your council this evening. Guidelines for public participation are posted up behind me on the screen and please limit your comments this evening to five minutes. If you signed up on the sign up list, you will be called up first and if you did not sign up, do not worry. When we get to the end of the list, we will ask to see if there are any others who would also like to address council this evening. If you are here speaking as part of a group, a group wearing green scarves perhaps, you may want to identify that group as you come up and if you're in the audience this evening and you are hearing comments by any of our speakers and you want to demonstrate your support to council, please raise your hand so they can see that support. Tina, has anyone signed up to speak this evening? Heather, come on up.
You can come up together. Okay, I'm gonna go first. So my name's Malia Greening, you know me because I've been here a few times. I live on Bush Street in Old Town Issaquah and I attended the meeting last week and I want to thank you all for spending, I believe it was a good two hours discussing the traffic calming issues in Old Town Issaquah. I left the meeting with three basic, oh well look, there it is, okay. I left the meeting with basically three takeaways. The first one is that you are working on a traffic plan and hoping to implement it by fall 2020 and that focused on safe crossings. That was option one. Option two was focusing in addition to safe crossings, improving sidewalks. The second thing I took away on the meeting was that you will have conversations about funding for these activities, these changes that you'll be making. And the third one that I took away was that, this is said by one of the council members, was that we are not in a crisis right now. Addressing number one, I am hopeful that the traffic calming implementations will be done in the fall. However, I do think that we are needing traffic calming now and a couple council members did mention that they were in agreement with that, that there should be some changes now such as improving the crossing for students on Second and Bush with lighted beacons of some kind. I also heard the word that you were gonna be, you were gonna have a conversation about fixing a lot of these issues and I do feel like we've been having conversations about this since November of 2019 when Heather and I first came to address the issue of the elderly man that was almost killed crossing the street near the preschool. And so I feel like we've really tried to make an effort to show up as well as a lot of our community members to focus on this. So I'm kind of tired of hearing conversation. I really would like to see some action as well as all my neighbors. Also, you mentioned that we were not in a crisis right now and I found that personally disturbing because I would beg to differ. I would say that the gentleman who was struck in the crosswalk and was hospitalized with severe injuries, I believe him, he and his family would definitely disagree that this is not a crisis. I also would say that the young man that was riding his bike to school that was struck in the crosswalk would also disagree that we are not in a crisis. I also would say that our crossing guard who came and spoke to you about all the issues we have in the crosswalk, how many of us have almost been hit, how there have been cars up where students are standing, that we are definitely in some kind of crisis right now. I am pretty, and she was speaking on behalf of all the students at Clark, Issaquah High School, Gibsonak and IMS because she sees these dangerous situations all day. I also would like to point out that a lot of our neighbors have spoken personally from seeing, from seeing cars on their own streets that we are in a crisis and I'm not sure what exactly the definition of a crisis would be at this time but I certainly hope that we do not define crisis as a reactive situation where someone dies and then we react because as you know, I have been very passionate about what happened on Newport Way in 2015 and I do not want to see that happening to one of our students at Bush, on Bush Street, at Clark Elementary School. Heather?
Thank you, Malia.
Okay. I'm gonna run through the slideshow here. I'm Heather Finerty, I live at 423 Southeast Clark Street and again, I'd like to also offer my thank you for all the support that we did get last time we were here talking to city engineers. My big takeaway along with Malia's was something that Chris said is looking at what was the root cause and that's really been playing around in my head is are we chasing small fires with Band-Aids or are we looking at the big picture here and what is the root cause and what are the fixes? In 2017, our problem was speed and illegal turns. In 2008, and we came to you with that. In 2018, the speed bumps were installed, the roundabouts were installed and the turn restrictions were removed. In 2019, because the turn restrictions are removed, we still have speed and we have doubled the volume of cars. So now our problem is actually worse than it was in 2017 because the turn restrictions were removed. The root cause is beating the timing of the light on Second. The root cause is the removal of the turn restriction. The root cause is the overall volume of traffic on Sunset and Second Avenue and it is school cut-through traffic and it is, excuse me, it is school traffic and it is cut-through traffic. How you discern between the two, I'm not sure you can really go there. However, it is obvious to people within the neighborhood when it is a school volume of traffic and when it is a cut-through volume of traffic. And the root cause is also a lack of law enforcement around the other issues. So the solution then, if looking at four root causes, I have three solutions. We either change the laws, change the enforcement, or we change the volume on the non-articular streets and those are our neighborhoods. Next slide, please. Something that I noticed while I was sitting there counting cars, as cars approached, and I looked at the backup that was also presented last week, the speed bump was a visual indicator for cars that were coming down the road. As soon as they could see a certain amount of cars, and it was usually five or six cars backed up, it hit the speed bump at a certain amount of time, then the cars would start to go off, and they would go down Crosston, or they would go down the other alley. And it would usually be a pattern of five cars that would go to the right or to the left, and they could see the cars backed up. And when the car backup got a little bit lower, then they would continue down Bush Street. And when it got back to the speed bump, they would turn left, or they would turn right and go down alley or the alley or Crosston. I also noticed that cars were not slowing over the speed bump. And again, this is a snapshot of one day. If we take a look at this map, on the left, the orange with the yellow circles is what was presented last week of extending the school zones, which puts just a little bit in front of Clark Elementary, and then across Bush Street in front of there. And what we're proposing is that we do much more than that, and this follows along with main arterials, which go with the Washington School Grants. And the school grant zone is taking the school zone and wrapping around the entire perimeter, half-mile perimeter that matches with Cougar Ridge. And Liberty High School now, is what I'm understanding, follows something very similar. If we take that school zone of what's original, down Second Street, they're extending it in front of Clark Elementary School, it should go down Front Street. If you look to the west of Front Street, that's a walking zone. There's no transportation. If you go down to Sunset Way and cross over Sunset, that's a walking area. There's no school transportation, and then everything inside that grid is a walking school zone. There is no transportation. Those main arterials have to be school zones. We have to provide safe passage for the kids to get across.
Do you want to, Heather, I hate that noise. Heather, do you want to wrap up, please?
Okay. If we can get to the next slide, I won't go through that, you can look at it another time, I will wrap it up with the last slide. Actually, we can go ahead and do that. This is, just addresses our sidewalks, we can skip the next slide, too. This addresses our sidewalks, people walking down it. I asked last time we were here, if you could please, as a good, shine of good faith, put up the turn restrictions, get officers at Second and Bush, or Second and Bush right away. Show us that there's something actionable that's happening before summer, before five years from now. The very last slide takes everything that we have talked about since November 4th and breaks it down. We started a Facebook page, and it documents everything. We've been trained well. I was a teacher for 15 years in the Lake Washington School District, same for Malia in Issaquah School District. When something looks wrong, we document, and we document everything thoroughly, and it's all documented on that page to then garner more support. We're going to the school board, the school boards, and getting louder from there, but I think we've exhausted the information, and we will need to see action, not conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Next on the sign-up?
Yeah, next and last on my list is Larry Franks.
Larry Franks.
Good evening. My name is Larry Franks. I am a 48-year resident of Issaquah, and I'm actually here to speak on behalf of my friend Chinny. And her beef, and why she chooses that term is beyond my comprehension, is with impervious surfaces. Eighty-five percent is not a good number. Ninety-five percent is not a good number. We came within four inches of losing our entire year class of fish at the Issaquah Salmon Hattery. Three million of her relatives would have been washed out to the lake to be consumed by the predators there. That's her message. She also raises a fin in support of climate change. This is a cold-water fish. We've got to keep her water cold. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. I expected a few more green scarf hands to go up there, but there are some hands in support. Is there anyone else who would like to come up and address the council this evening? Come on up, Ann.
I'm Ann Fletcher, and I live at 255 Southeast Andrews Street. I'm with the People for Climate Action Group here, and I'm speaking about the K-4C commitments. The K-4C commitments being presented at the council tonight indicate that each city needs to determine how it will go about its climate action tasks. These revised K-4C commitments are now a stronger framework, within which cities can determine the many actions they will need to implement in order to impact climate change. This is a welcome catalyst, because our region has not been meeting carbon emission goals that were set by the previous 2014 K-4C commitments. And we want to improve. Issaquah People for Action, PCA, members are at this meeting tonight to support the approval of the resolution for these commitments, and to be an example for how cities and residents can collaborate for the common good, and to share our appreciation for our city's responsiveness, which doesn't happen everywhere, to involve the community in moving forward. In addition, we want to point out and call to your attention the complexity and depth of actions that will be needed to have the desired effect on climate. And with that in mind, I recently emailed you a new document from the PCA Coalition Working Group. It is for your high-level review versus detailed review, but the coalition sends out information and analysis to help us provide cities with information. And it lists potential action options that the cities could take, using successful city models as a basis. So we've already sent this document to the Office of Sustainability, we're working with, and for possible future reference, and particularly the focus on building and energy efficiency seems important. It's an area our recent carbon inventory indicated was important for us to address. City groups are also supporting each other, and our PCA group will be sharing Issaquah's city actions with the coalition this spring. So we also understand that the county will be providing consultant support to the cities in the form of a toolkit later in 2020. So tonight, what we want to do is just provide perspective and to support this opportunity to understand the work of our Issaquah community and our government, and how we can best build on the K-4C commitments. We want to acknowledge the substantial implementation work that cities need to do to succeed in reducing carbon emissions, but despite the considerable efforts, we, we fully, we are fully committed to move forward on it, and with the city. And we know it will be worth it, and we are hopeful about what we can accomplish together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Hands and green scarves in the air. Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening? I'll do a second call. Anyone wishing to address council during audience comments, and a third and final call. Thank you all for coming tonight, Heather and Malia. We all know you by your first name now. Thank you. We're also getting to know those People for Climate Action by their first name, and appreciate that you take the time to come out to the meetings and talk to your council about these issues. The next item on our agenda this evening is committee and regional reports, and we will start with Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. No report.
Councilmember DeMichele.
I have a report today. Mayor Polly, myself, and Human Services Director Monica Negrilla attended a Sound Cities Association meeting regarding the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. It was held in Tukwila, and so just some general background about the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. The purpose of the KCRAHA is to provide consolidated aligned service for people and families experiencing homelessness or close to experiencing homelessness. As opposed to the King County Housing Authority, so that there's no confusion between those two groups, the Homelessness Authority does not build or manage housing, and it's focused on crisis response and on increasing effectiveness by pulling the factionalized system of response together. This is the first time for the Sound Cities Association to sit on a governance board for an organization like this. SCA will be represented by Nancy Backus, who's the mayor of Auburn, Angela Burney, who's the mayor of Redmond, Ed Prince, who's a council member in Renton, and they will be our regional reps on this new authority. There are four tiers in the organization chart. There will be a governing board, and that's where Sound Cities Association will be represented. There will be a CEO that will be named in the future. There will be an advisory committee representing community, and then there will be an expert/technical/implementation committee. The funding for this group is coming from the county, 55 million, and from the city of Seattle, 73 million. The technical committee will be appointed in April. There will be 13 members representing sectors relevant to homelessness. People on this group cannot be elected officials, they can't be city staff, and they cannot be service providers. And we are being invited, all the cities in the Sound Cities Association are being invited to nominate people for this group, and to do that soon, but they are to be people who are conversant with homelessness and who can help guide the direction of this group. And the first meeting of the governance group will be on March 12th. So, the question and the reason they brought us all together was to get our input into what were some of the challenges facing each of the cities that were around the table. I have to commend Mayor Polly, because she really got the ball rolling there when she talked about the urgency of the issue, and then discussed one of the factors that is a challenge for us, which is that many of our homeless encampments are on land that is not owned or controlled by us. For example, land that's owned by DNR, or WashDOT, or the state of Washington, and therefore makes it very difficult, because people in our community ask, why can't we do something? And it's a real challenge. She made those remarks, and those were seconded by the city of Snoqualmie and the city of Edumclaw, and generally by the cities that were represented there who are rural, or who are like us, between urban and rural situations. So this was a comment that seemed to resonate with a lot of our fellow city council members. And so we heard from others that, about a lack of services, but again, Snoqualmie talked about the fact that they have very few services, tends to perpetuate homelessness, and they are now dealing with generational homelessness, which is a new area that they are really struggling with there. So I thought it was a good meeting, and that it was productive, and I hope that perhaps we will be able to nominate some people from our community for that committee. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. The Puget Sound Regional Council's Economic Development District Board, PSRC EDDB, will be meeting on Friday. We are actually jumping on a tour bus and going to visit areas in Snohomish County that have demonstrated economic development opportunities. So we are visiting Payne Field, the Port of Everett, and Washington State University Everett, to get an opportunity to see these things up close and personal, and hopefully I'll bring back some nuggets that we can use here. And that is, concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Eastside Fire and Rescue's Finance and Administration Committee met last Wednesday, and as the city's representative on the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board, I attend that committee. And we continued our discussion of the potential new governance structure model for Eastside Fire, a nonprofit, and that discussion will continue at our next committee meeting later this month, with potentially a recommendation to the full board. And at that point, those documents and information about that will be coming back to this full council and all of the decision-making bodies of the other members of Eastside Fire and Rescue, and probably will even ask the fire chief, Clark, to come give us a presentation. The board also, Eastside Fire and Rescue Board also held a retreat last Thursday evening, and we talked about retreat stuff. It's not private or secret. It is, we got a high-level overview of the agency and about its budget, and talked generally about things that a board would talk about once a year when they have new members. We talked about improving board's engagement with the agency, and just a number of different improvements that we could make. It really was a great retreat. And then on Saturday, Station 73 in Issaquah Highlands had an open house, and I think they only have these open houses at these stations once every four years, so I might mention to the chief that they might think about having them more often, because there was just a great turnout. It was a great event, and I want to thank Eastside Fire and Rescue and all the folks who put that together and volunteered, including some from our city of Issaquah. Some of our employees were there, and it was, yeah, it was just a great event. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember March.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. PSRC Growth Management Planning Board will be meeting this Thursday, March 6th, from 10 till noon in the PSRC boardroom. We have two substantive items, discussion on regional housing strategy and how we'll be developing a new one, and discussion on PSRC council background and overview, which will be getting at the year's work plan, which I don't know why we didn't start that last month at the first meeting of the year, but there you have it. Sound Cities Association PIC will be meeting next Wednesday, the 12th, I believe, and our agenda includes a discussion with a legislative session update, regional transit funding measure update of where that's headed, update on the King County Regional Homelessness Authority, an update on the Affordable Housing Committee, and an update on Vision 2050. All this to say, no action, no planned or discussed potential action in that agenda. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. The King County Growth Management Planning Council met on February 26 at 4:00 PM at the Puget Sound Regional Council's offices in Seattle. King County provided a briefing on proposed changes to the King County urban growth boundaries as currently included in the King County Comprehensive Plan. These changes included a minor expansion in Woodinville, a minor expansion in Maple Valley, and of most interest to us, a contraction of Issaquah's urban growth area that would remove three parcels on Cougar Mountain that cannot be developed to urban densities. Actions anticipated on April 22th, GMPC meeting, to make a recommendation to the King County Council. GMPC also approved appointments to members to the Affordable Housing Committee. The Affordable Housing Committee is currently working on recommendation, recommended updates to the housing chapter of King County's countywide planning policies with the goal of supporting, meeting the region's needs for affordable housing. Their recommendations are expected to come back to the GMPC later this year, likely in the June timeframe. And as Councilmember March just mentioned, the SCA PIC will be briefed on the work of the Affordable Housing Committee and discussion in upcoming meeting in March. Also, staff provided an overview of the work plan and schedule for GMPC, including updates to the countywide planning policies, which will be the bulk of the work we do in 2020. The countywide planning policies establish the urban growth area boundaries, criteria for revising the UGA boundaries, growth targets for each jurisdiction, and a set of criteria for urban centers, so lots of important work to be done. The county planning policies are slated to be updated in time to provide a framework for updates to city comprehensive plans, which are due in 2023. Staff also did note that legislation is currently being considered in Olympia that may extend the deadline for updates to the comprehensive plan to 2025, and if that's the case, the timeline and work program for GMPC will shift accordingly. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Council President Hunt.
Thank you. The Title 18 Land Use Code Ad Hoc Committee council members met on February 29th. This was a meeting of just the three council members on that committee, and we took a step back and overall concluded that we want to refocus on the big-picture objectives. We felt we have a real opportunity here to, with this land use code revision, work to get a land use code that meets the community's expectations, and also gets us outcomes that are aligned with our strategic plan. We We, for where we felt we are in the process, we felt we were too far into the weeds in certain parts and wanted to take a bigger picture look over all of the possibilities for the land use code when it comes back to the full council. We will be working with the staff to ensure that for the next step, which will involve all of council, that that presentation, that that discussion is meaningful and as useful as possible and high level. And we also felt very positively about the Old Town Architectural Standards presentation that we recently all saw as an example of the kind of high-level presentation with the reasons for why we might consider changes and the big-picture outcomes that we're looking for with those changes. The next ad hoc meeting with the three ad hoc committee council members, as well as with the city staff, will be on March 5th, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Onto the mayor's report. There was an executive session held earlier this evening and action in regular session. The one item I want to talk about this evening is the one that's at the top of the headlines everywhere. I want to give an update on the coronavirus disease, COVID-19. So, as the confirmed cases count continues to rise, Issaquah is coordinating closely with public health, Seattle and King County, and our first responders to help keep our community prepared. Our first responders have ample preventative supplies on hand and response plans in place. The vast majority of the illnesses around the world are mild with fever and cough. A much smaller percentage of cases are severe and involve pneumonia, particularly in elderly people and people with underlying medical conditions. It's important that everyone use basic prevention methods to reduce the spread of novel coronavirus. Please be sure to stay home when you are sick, wash hands with soap and water for at least 20 seconds, have backup plans for work and our childcare. Meanwhile, we must work together to proactively address potential discrimination based on ethnicity or ancestry. A certain ancestry does not make a person more vulnerable to this disease. Coronavirus does not recognize race, nationality, or ethnicity. Here in Issaquah, we're stronger as a community when we stand together against discrimination. Please stay informed and prepared. We'll continue to keep our community updated via our website and on Twitter. And if you were not able to watch the governor's address this afternoon at 3:00, it's available on YouTube. He spent some time talking about the state response and how it is coordinated with the feds, how it's coordinated with us regionally and locally, and provided a lot of good information on links to stay up to date. So, it's really worth a watch. If you did not get to see it today, it was at 3:00. Moving on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, all of the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
Yes.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Seeing none, is there anyone prepared to make a motion? Council President Hunt.
I move to adopt the consent calendar as listed in tonight's published agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you. Our first item under regular business this evening is AB 7917, K4C Joint Climate Commitments Update. And the question before council this evening is to approve the resolution. This is the first time this item is coming before the city council, and I'd like to ask Megan Curtis Murphy, our Sustainability Coordinator, to come up and give a presentation.
Megan Curtis Murphy with the Sustainability Office. Thank you for having me here this evening to talk about the King County Cities Climate Collaboration, also known as K4C, and the Joint Climate Commitments. So, the purpose of the presentation tonight is to talk about the background around the K4C and the Joint Climate Commitments and the updates that have been made to them recently, also before the council, as a resolution in support of the Joint Climate Commitments. The city has been a member of the K4C since 2012, and the K4C works together with local governments to enhance climate and sustainability actions. In 2014, the city signed on to the Joint Climate Commitments, and this charts our opportunities for joint actions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and accelerate progress towards a clean and sustainable future. A lot has changed in the last five years. So, before us this evening is an update to the Joint Climate Commitments, and I'm going to be joined in a moment by Rachel Brumba, the Energy and Partnership Specialist at Office of King County Executive Dow Constantine, to talk a little bit more about the K4C and those updates to the commitments. I also want to touch on the climate planning efforts that the city has been working on. As you remember, last month, we were before the council to present the carbon inventory update, and with that, we have our majority of our emissions coming from buildings, it's 62%, and 38% from transportation. As directed by council, we've been working with community groups, some who are here this evening, on a climate convening, which we're going to be having on May 2 of this year. We're still in the planning stages for that, but we'll be inviting residents, businesses, and the community to join us in that climate planning effort. The Joint Climate Commitments have really been foundational in the work that we've done on climate in the city to date. I think they have a really great framework, and will bring in partnerships that we'll be able to use as we continue on this climate planning pathway. So, I'd like to invite Rachel Brumba to come up and talk a little bit more about the K4C.
Well, thank you for having me here tonight, and thanks for, the PCA community members for showing up. My name's Rachel Brumba, Energy and Policy and Partnership Specialist in the Office of King County Dow Constantine. Want to just talk a little bit about the K4C, a little bit of background first. I want to talk about who's in the K4C, talk about a little bit of the history of the joint commitments, and then review the updates of the joint commitments, and I'll go through that fairly quickly. It's a little dense. I'm having trouble room up here. Okay. So, the K4C was really founded on the goal that we can do more together. We can share resources, and we can work and split the load and be better together. So, how we've worked in this regional collaboration model is we collaborate on goals and measuring progress, so that will speak to the goals that you'll see in the joint commitments. We share experiences and learn from each other's success and challenges. If you see, there's a rather dated picture of K4C partner staff in 2016, but we meet almost monthly to go over best practices, learn what each other's doing, and learn from each other. At the top there is a picture of K4C elected officials at a work session in 2019. And I know Mayor Polly, you've been a regular attendee at these meetings. Thank you. Those have been really great meetings where elected officials can get together and meet with each other and share best practices and make decisions that help chart the K4C going forward. I want to put in a plug for our next K4C elected official meeting. It's coming up April 24th. I hope you saw an invitation in your inbox this morning, actually. I warmly invite you to attend. Location TBD, we'll be figuring that out soon. There's more and more elected officials and staff that attend, and so we keep having to find larger and larger rooms, which is a wonderful problem to have. What else we work on together is sharing grants, funding and resources, again, sharing that knowledge, coordinating our outreach and messaging so that we have uniform voices out together, raise the profile of our climate work, make sure that ordinary residents know what we're doing, and our business partners know what we're doing, share staff training and expertise, again, that peer-to-peer network that we have that we can talk about what are best practices that each jurisdiction is doing. We engage elected officials, not only the ones that are active in it, but we engage with state-level officials frequently. But really, the bottom two bullet points are the main. You know, we speak with a collective voice for greater impact and make sure that local actions have a bigger impact. And if you'll look, it really speaks to who our partners are. We have very large cities, and we have some smaller cities, and everyone has an equal voice. And when we get together in the whole large group, it really makes the impact. So, the K4C right now has 18 partners. It's King County, the Port of Seattle, and 16 cities. You can see who's up there. It is, the elected officials represent 1.6 million people, about 80% of King County's population. We continue to look to recruit new members. There's always new interest. So, if you know other council members in other jurisdictions that are not members of the K4C, always appreciate a plug there. Then, I want to speak really to the joint commitments background, and Megan touched on it briefly, but these are really our foundational documents for how we operate. So, they have our guiding policies, and then our pathways and our investments and what we do. So, the ones that we have been operating off of for the past five years were developed in 2014. As Megan said, lots of things have changed. They have guiding principles and actions for each sector, and so we'll go over them a little bit more in detail. Really key to it, and this might almost be one of the biggest bullet points, is it's not one size fits all. And you'll see, we called it out really explicitly in the updated joint commitments, is that the commitments are really focused on allowing each individual jurisdiction to do what is best for that jurisdiction. What actions and investments work with the particular land use patterns, your population, your demographics, your emissions profile of your jurisdiction. Not everyone is expected to do the same thing. And I think that's really key, that we're not expecting the same suite of actions for every individual entity. This letter of commitment was optional. We also have the inter-local agreement, which sets the foundation of just paying dues and will show up to meetings and be a participant. That is separate. It is optional. Most K4C partners signed on in 2014. We are, I think, up to six or seven jurisdictions have signed on to the new commitments. Anyway, there was a refresh recommended at the 2019 K4C work session, and there were a variety of new state laws, just an update on technology. It's probably good to look at things every five years anyway, but it does reflect our updated emissions inventory that the county runs countywide, reflects the 100% clean law. And it's also, this is really key, it's informed by county climate change workshops that we held in summer and fall of 2019. Those were really to also inform our Strategic Climate Action Plan update that we're working on, that we'll transmit to our council in June. But we had a lot of stakeholder meetings with not-for-profit organizations and special organizations, but also had three public meetings, one in Bellevue, one at the University of Washington, and one down at Highline Community College. And we had over 250 really engaged citizens come to these meetings and tell us what was important to them, both on the operations side and on the community-wide scale. So, at a super-high level, I want to go over these, and then we'll go over each section. But if there's a certain aspect of it that's really important to you, I want you to let me know, and please, of course, feel free to ask questions. But as I mentioned earlier, the Joint Commitment Update really pulls out that key tenet that each partner may not pursue all actions and will act where it has the most impact and influence, given the unique characteristics of the jurisdiction. And I know that's super-important to every jurisdiction, that the county's not telling you what to do, Seattle's not telling you what to do, you get to figure out what is best for you and for your residents. It adds, the Growth Management Planning Council adopted greenhouse gas reduction targets and proposes that K4C partners adopt their own supportive targets. Just from how timing was, the original document didn't have the GMPC adopted targets called out clearly. Those were actually adopted afterwards, so that's just a clarification, really a technical. Reflects our updated county emissions inventory and new analysis of pathways to reach the countywide goal of 50% reduction by 2030 and 80% by 2050. Another super-important point incorporates stronger language around equity, climate justice, and transition for workers. That was not so strong in the last version. It extends our transportation and energy efficiency goals out to 2050, so really extends those. Adds actions relating to reducing the use of fossil fuels in buildings. Adds language about tools to support implementation of shared commitments, such as a toolkit, which the county is working on right now. We will have ready, hopefully, at the end of July and can start sharing it at that point. And reflecting changes in technology, adds a new section for electric vehicles and also a focus for preparing for climate impacts. So, staff and I, we went through each section and highlighted really some of the key points of each one. I can speak to things that might be different. I just, I do want to pause and see if there were any specific questions that folks had before we dive in, so.
Looking like you're good to go.
Okay, great. And this is, I have to admit, I present to a lot of councils, and I'm always impressed with the level of detail that city councils are willing to go to on things like that. It's amazing. So, kudos to you. So, this is the first section. It's shared goals. Not a lot of changes on this one. This one is, as I mentioned, to achieve the shared countywide greenhouse gas emission targets that reduce the emissions by 50% by 2030 and 80% by 2050. Those are called out explicitly. They were not called out before. That's really the only change in this section. The next one, climate policy. This one actually doesn't have any change at all, but it really seeks that we will support strong federal, regional, state, countywide, and local climate policy, which advocates for science-based limits and a market-based price on carbon pollution with reinvestment to areas where it's needed most. So, no changes in this one at all. The next one here, transportation and land use. This one really speaks to, the changes on this one really speak to, how are we going to increase transit and other options, increase mobility regionally with the goal of reducing driving per capita 20% by 2030 and 50% by 2050 compared to 2017 levels? That last sentence in that first paragraph is super-important, understanding that different areas of the county have varying levels of transit access. So, a 20% or 50% reduction per capita driving is much easier in downtown Seattle, which is super-well-served by transit. Understand that in Issaquah, which is, I would say, less frequently served by transit than downtown Seattle, that would be more challenging. We do not expect people to be able to drive only halfway to Seattle, or only halfway to the pass or where they're going. So, again, that one is super-important. I think it's also one where, of course, the county and our partners, Issaquah being one of them, are seeking to constantly improve transit and make it faster, better, a preferred mode of option. But until that time, we understand that probably a lot of folks in this area need to drive to get where they're going. So, I just really would call that out. Really, the other goals on here are not super, have not changed a lot. Continue to secure funding for transit and support mobility through land use and street planning. Implement Vision 2050 is an update. It was 2040 in the previous version, but most of this is exactly the same. The next one here, clean fuels and electric vehicles. This one was part of the transportation and land use, but we decided to split it out just because clean fuels is obviously a topic these days, and electric vehicles have come a long way since 2014. There's a lot more of them, and I think they're a lot better. So, this one really, the changes on here really are, the base of this is to protect fuel economy standards and to adopt statewide or regional clean fuel standard that reduces transportation fuel intensities by at least 20% by 2030 compared to 2017 levels. And so, the last part in this is increasing the use of electric vehicles, such that 100% of light-duty vehicles and 60% of medium-duty and 40% heavy-duty vehicles are electric by 2050. Understand that this is the community-wide goal. This is not the government operations goal, that to a certain extent, we may not have any power over. It's some market forces that we do. But to take those type of steps that can help incent it, like enacting codes and programs to incent or require EV charging in buildings and development so that people can plug in where and when they need to and don't have that range anxiety. Next one, energy supply. This one, this one reflects the passage of the Washington State Clean Energy Transformation Act, which actually met some of the goals in the 2014 Joint Commitments, which was to seek clean electricity supplies. And now, with the passage of it, we are well on that way to it with also phasing out coal-fired electricity sources by 2025, and we will have 80% carbon neutral electricity by 2030. And we will have 80% carbon neutral electricity by 2030, assuming that we implement the act. So this one does not have a lot of changes. This is actually one of them that's a real success story of the work of the K4C to come together and help support that law in the legislature last year. There is one of the changes that is in addition in this one, other than just partnering with utilities and stakeholders to support renewable energy development, you know, community solar, green power, streamline permitting, using those jurisdictional tools that you have to support it. Another one that's new is participate in integrated resource plan and energy plan development process to ensure equitable distribution of benefits. And so this is one of those areas where actually the sharing and the peer sharing between staff is really important. So this is one of the things that probably not every staff member in every K4C has the capacity to do. However, I am lucky enough that I get to do this, and I actually find it fascinating. It's really interesting to participate in the dockets at the Washington State Utilities and Transportation Commission. It's also fundamental to our electricity grid. And when I participate in these, I share all the information with K4C staff, and if we decide that it would be impactful to draft a letter to Chairman Danner or the UTC or to a legislator, I typically draft that, ask for comment from your respective staffs, and then circulate it. So that we're really trying to take a lot of that effort and that workload off of staff that might not have the capacity. But this is definitely part of, like, this is part of my job description that I do and that I share.
Oh, Councilmember Martsch.
Yeah, I have a question. So, I mean, I'm proud that Issaquah is, I believe, a founding member of K4C. But one question that I had is around this energy supply issue. I'm sure you're aware, and it makes reference in one of our documents here, that the city of Issaquah chose not to sign on to the 2019 King County, and I had the language in front of me, but now I don't, basically, the 2019 Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan. And so part of that was around an ongoing discussion that some of us felt around power plants, basically based on incinerators. And so the question is, and this is a conversation that I think is going on throughout the county, and does this energy supply policy sort of bind K4C on one side or the other on this long-term debate about, you know, sort of the Northern European model of doing garbage incineration versus continued landfill that we're, the path we're on right now?
I would say no, because typically, one doesn't think about a waste energy plant as actually a huge portion of your overall electricity supply. And you could think of it also as potentially qualifying for a clean electricity supply. So the goal was really to focus on, you know, renewable hydro and other clean sources instead of the natural gas and the coal-fired. That was really the goal of it. Not front and center was the waste to energy or the landfill debate.
Okay. So we wouldn't see this, you know, if in 10 years or, you know, whenever, this subject came up again for the county and the direction the county wants to go, and this wouldn't sort of tie K4C's hands on getting involved in that debate?
I don't think so, and that's where everyone has an equal voice, and that would be an issue that if you saw that coming, if you were in that chair in 10 years, you should bring that up, and that would be something that would definitely be, you know, a subject of debate. But I don't see it going there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Hunt.
A comment, which is, it's my understanding that under the state law, it is considered renewable energy if energy is generated from a landfill site, so it might, for what that's worth.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's keep moving on here. Green building and energy efficiency. As Megan pointed out, your largest source of carbon emissions is from the built environment. That's not unusual, actually. A lot of this focuses on the same goals that we've had, our reducing energy use in existing buildings 25% by 2030 and 45% by 2050. Those have been stretched out. That's one of the goals that's been stretched out. But really seeks to continue to work on building codes that provide for more efficient homes and businesses that save residents and building owners money and energy and just reduce our overall impact. The more efficiency we have, the less we have to focus on what is our renewable supply. So one thing that is new in here is a focus on reducing natural gas and other fossil fuel use in existing buildings by 20% by 2030 and 80% by 2050. And how the county envisions it, and I believe this is how the rest of the K4C envisions it, is not through, not through a ban, I'm not going to say that word, but through implementation of stronger conservation, passed last year, House Bill 1257 in the legislature, through conversion to electrical sources, and then through the use of renewable natural gas, which again kind of speaks to the landfill. So that is one thing that is really, is a change in this one. Next one, consumption and materials management. Not a lot has changed on this one, seeking a very high recycling rate and also seeking zero waste of resources through 2030. That's something that we're looking to put forward in our 2020 Strategic Climate Action Plan. It's not, the program and the policies are not fully formed, but we're setting that as a very aspirational goal. Next, forest and farming. Not a lot of change on this one, seeking to preserve the forests that we have in plenty around here, but also the farm and agriculture by keeping those vibrant and focusing growth in urban centers so that we do have forests and farms that help the salmon and all the other great things that we talked about a little bit earlier. The one thing that is different on this one, this addition, is just supporting the local food economy. And King County has the Local Food Initiative, which seeks to link farmers and buyers and really support our agrarian economy here in the region. Last one, or no, next to last, excuse me, operations. This one speaks to how does each jurisdiction manage their own portfolio of buildings and their operational use? This one does not have a lot of change. It seeks to have cities and partners develop their own greenhouse gas emission reduction targets and take action in order to hit those with energy efficiency, benchmarking, constructing new buildings to lead, and other high-efficiency standards. I know Issaquah's experienced in that. The only thing that's new on that one is electrifying municipal vehicles. That was something that wasn't in the last iteration, because I don't think they were, there wasn't as much market penetration at that point. Climate preparedness. This whole section is brand-new, and it's, there's not a lot of detail on this, just because we're still trying to figure out what is the best model, what are some of the best steps to take? We want to make sure that's informed by science. But really speaks to wanting to talk to preparedness, not only for our own operations, but to protect the residents in our jurisdictions. And then lastly, this one hasn't changed at all, just speaking to collaboration, which was participating in the K4C and sharing knowledge and helping to lead us through the climate and sustainability efforts that we're all working on. So that's the overview. I'll hand it back to Megan now.
Thank you, Rachel. Megan, is there any more presentations this evening, or are we moving to the recommendations?
Moving to the recommendations. So the recommendation before the council this morning, or this evening, is to declare support for the King County City's Climate Collaboration Joint Letter of Commitment and authorizing the city of Issaquah to be a signatory to the letter.
Are there any questions? Councilmember DeMichele.
So looking at the recommendations, and I see that each city is responsible for setting their own measurements and ways of measuring our progress. Is there any way that the county is measuring overall progress toward these goals? And could you just speak to that a little bit? Because we had a work-study session a few weeks ago on environmental issues, and what we heard real clearly from the citizens that were there was that there's a great deal of urgency, a feeling of urgency in the community about, let's get going. Let's start working on these goals, and let's start achieving some of these ends that we want to achieve. So if you could just talk to how we're measuring it on a countywide basis and not just on a local, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. So by design, the countywide goals of the county's Strategic Climate Action Plan align very closely with the K4C commitments. And that's because we don't want to have countywide goals and targets that we, that our partners have not bought into. So with that in mind, we have updates every two years on our climate action plan. And our latest one was two years ago, where we tracked progress on a wide variety of these goals. And that's a document that I could send to you, I'd be happy to, I could send it to the whole council, which shows on many, many of these how we are tracking it. We also do a countywide greenhouse gas emission inventory every two years, which is part of that report. And on some things, we're doing well. On some things, like our overall energy supply, our energy supply is about 63% renewable as of 2018. And this is just the data, the most recent data. I don't have it for anything more recent. So that's an improvement. We're not at the 80% or the 90% that we want to be, but it has been improving. On the flip side, in building efficiency, the goal is 25% reduction in the existing building stock by 2030. We are, I hate to admit this, we are actually going in the wrong direction. And part of that, part of that is because we've had hundreds of thousands of people move into this region since 2015, and millions of square feet of commercial and residential building stock come online. So, you know, much like a salmon, we're swimming uphill on that one. That just means that we need to work harder to get the building stock better. A lot of the building that is coming online, and that has come online in the past couple years, are being built under more strict building and energy codes established by local jurisdictions or at the state level. But we really need to work on that existing housing stock to get it more efficient. So I'd be happy to show that document later.
I would really love to have that document. Thank you.
That would be great, Rachel, and if you could share that with the city clerk, it becomes part of the public record, and she will distribute it to council. Just a little clarification on the last point that you made about heading in the wrong direction. If you actually look at the gross number of new units and new square footage, the rate of use of non-renewables is declining. So we have a rate that's going in the right direction, but the volume of housing and new commercial is added to the inventory.
Right. It speaks to how we need to improve our phrasing and measurement of it.
Other questions? Okay, are we ready for a motion? Council President Hunt.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2020-04, declaring support for the King County City's Climate Collaboration Joint Letter of Commitment and authorizing the city of Issaquah to be a signatory of that letter.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. So I'm going to support the idea of us working together with the K4C in the joint letter of commitment. I just get concerned when we talk plans and letters and resolutions and all of that. I want to see action, and I don't want this to be seen as us greenwashing our reputation and saying, oh, look, we signed on to something we're doing well. I think as a city, both our residents and our elected officials are very interested in making movement on this. And so what I would ask of K4C is help us with that, which is, I think, what the relationship is designed to do, to help support, hey, if we say we want to look at building codes, what can we do to help improve that? I'm hoping that we can have that kind of a relationship where we can move the needle and not just sign a document, so.
That is a great point. There are a couple of things going on here. One, if you notice the map with all the cities on it, is that this group is really trying to build momentum within the state itself. Not all cities are a part of this. So a lot of what has been going on over the last few years is to get them excited, to get them to join, and then to look at those areas of science and research that are going on that can help. And if anybody is ever ready to put their hand up to do a pilot, it's definitely this council. They are very action-oriented, and when there are things that can be done, this is the kind of council that likes to get that done. So thank you. That's a really good comment. Any other comments or questions? Council President Hunt.
I wanted to thank you, Rachel, for the very comprehensive presentation, and I think that this is a good way for us to share success stories, as well as the areas where we need improvement or need to try something else within the cities and the collaboration. So I think that for that, as well as for sharing things like the toolkit that we heard about, and, you know, sharing ideas of how we can actually take those actions and start making more improvements, I think it's a good way to share among the cities. And I also appreciate hearing about the progress in the areas where we've made progress, and I'm in strong support.
Any other comments? If not, I'm going to call for the vote on the motion. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2020-04, declaring support for the King County City's Climate Collaboration Joint Letter of Commitment and authorizing the city of Issaquah to be a signatory to the letter, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for coming, Rachel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
The next item, oh, wow, there are waving hands and lots of green scarves in the air. Moving on to the next item on the agenda this evening, AB 7789, park impact fees. The action before council, the request to council this evening is to adopt this ordinance. This item was before council at the December 10, 2019 council study session, and we'll get Parks and Community Services Director Jeff Watling to the lectern. But I hear you have a new boss. Monica is now the Director of Human Services.
That's right. I'm willing to serve.
Yeah. When you called, "Thank you" out for Monica today, you gave her a promotion in your "thank you." So, okay, Jeff, you did.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Yeah, Trish Heinonen with Development Services Department is out of the office this week. She's been leading this impact fee effort along with the other impact fee updates. With her out of the office, you're stuck with me tonight for this introduction, and then I'll be handing it over to our consultant team from FCS Group to go over this. We're seeking action tonight, as the mayor said, on this agenda bill to update our park impact fees. Real quickly, before handing it over, the rate study that really makes up the justification for this impact fee ordinance and update was built upon our 2018 community-led Park Strategic Plan effort. That Park Strategic Plan, if you recall, then built our current Parks Capital Improvement Plan, our CIP. By allowing this rate study to build upon those, we are bringing forward to you tonight a park impact fee update that's aligned with those efforts, with the Park Strategic Plan and the Park CIP. The actions we're requesting tonight is to, again, review the information. I'll have John from FCS Group come up and do that, including questions and answers. Trish did a very nice job of, in the agenda bill, identifying the questions that you asked at the December 10 study session and responses to that. We'll then open it up for discussion and any Q and A, and then seek your approval tonight for this park impact fee update. And with that, I'll hand it over to John to give an overview. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Mayor and council. So I'll start out by answering, or at least addressing, the questions that we came away with from the December 10 meeting. And then a little bit of background, which will be a refresher for some of you, what is an impact fee and the statutory basis for an impact fee? And then we'll go right into the results and some comparative information with
And then we'll go right into the results and some comparative information with neighboring jurisdictions and also how these proposed fees would impact different land uses in So in, in the meeting in December, there was a question asked about looking at the growth projections that we were using and the average occupancy rates and comparing that with school district assumptions because they've done so much work with population forecasting. And we found that the data that they had was mostly about existing housing counts. They were not forecasting growth. And so we certainly didn't find any conflicting information with the comp plan growth assumptions that we had been using. They're also not using any occupancy rates that differ from the average occupancy rates that are built into the park impact fee calculations that we've used. So we did do that check and found nothing that contradicted the work that, that we'd been doing to date. The other question that was asked, in the, in the preliminary fees that we presented to you in December, we were deducting outstanding debt against the impact fee cost basis. And we were asked about that and investigated it and ended up agreeing that we should not be, we should not be deducting debt from the impact fee cost basis. So we're no longer deducting that debt. And there are a couple of other modifications up and down to the fee. So the results you see will be slightly different. That's part of the reason from the ones you saw in December. So an impact fee, this is a, a one-time fee paid by new development at the time of development and it is supposed to represent a proportionate share of the cost of system facilities. So in this case, parks, a share of the park system that will serve new growth, that will serve that new development. So there has to be a nexus there between the facilities and the benefits being provided to growth. The math is pretty straightforward. It's, it's a little bit difficult isolating these numbers. There are a number of adjustments we have to make. But that future project component is the main piece of the impact fee. If you picture the full list of planned parks capital improvements, we're isolating the growth-related portion of each of those projects and we're dividing it by the growth that those projects will serve. And that gives us our impact fee, at least the future-looking piece. The law allows you to charge a buy-in to the existing park system. However, to do that, you'd have to show that there was surplus capacity in the park system and we'd have to account for how that system was funded. So in short, in Issaquah, as in most cities in the state of Washington, there is no existing component to this impact fee. It's all about the future-looking, paying for the planned projects. So I'll start with the, moving into the results now, I'll, I'll start with the denominator in the impact fee calculation, and that is the growth that the project list will serve. We had population information for 2015. We grew it to 2019, which we'll call the current year, and then grew that to the end of the planning period, 20 years in 2039, using growth assumptions consistent with the comp plan growth. So that resulting number, as you see there, 14,165 new residents expected in Issaquah between now and 2039. We also had employee counts and we grew those from 2019 to 2039. That's actually a slightly different growth rate. There are different growth expected in the employee base than there is in the population. Growth in employees, about 11,000, 11,144. We know that non-resident employees, folks working in Issaquah, aren't going to be able to use the parks as much as a full-time resident. So that line you see, resident, residential equivalent employees, they're, one employee is about 10% of a resident in terms of how they can access and, and impact the park system. So those are residential equivalents. We add that top line and the third line to get our total number of residential equivalents, 15,341. That's the growth again, expected between now and 2039. That's going to be the denominator in the charge calculation. You see a calculated growth eligibility percentage there of 27.62%. All that is, is the 15,000 in growth divided by the total number of residential equivalents projected for 2039. So what we're saying is, in 2039, 27.62% of that population of residential equivalents will be made up of the growth from now to 2039. So we'll actually use that percentage to allocate project costs for parks improvements that we know will benefit current population and future proportionally. It's basically, it's basically a proportional allocation. Lot on that slide. So then the numerator, the dollars part of the calculation, this is a very high-level summary of a long list of capital improvements totaling a little over $300 million. Of those, we took out projects which were straight replacement. So if they're not adding any capacity for, for future users, we can include them in the impact fee cost basis. So they are not included. They're 0% eligible. There are a number of projects which are adding acreage, adding linear miles of trail, and those, because they're not correcting any deficiencies in the parks and they're not adding surplus capacity that you don't need, they are 100% eligible. So those projects are 100% included. Those, what we're calling improvement projects, are improvements to existing parks in the city, existing park land, which will add capacity that will be enjoyed by the current population and growth. Those get that proportional allocation of 27.62%. The final adjustment we're making, and this we acknowledged since the December meeting, we went back and took a harder look at the list of projects. And, and due to uncertainty about whether the city could fully execute the long-term projects in that parks plan, in the park CIP, whether those costs would hold up, we decided to weight those at 50%. Again, due to that uncertainty about whether the city would be able to accomplish that whole list. It's a substantial amount of that, of that total project list. So the end result of those adjustments, of that 303 million, 198 million in projects are included. And of those, 52.4 million is the impact fee eligible portion of that project list. So that's going to be the numerator in the charge calculation.
Councilmember Walsh?
How does that numerator compare to the presentation to us in December?
Yeah. That, thank you. You've validated Luke's presence here at the meeting.
I was trying to look it up too, so I...
Yeah, I should have that. I didn't bring it up. So may I continue until he has that or, okay? We do ma-
I have it now. It was 68.6 million previously, so there you go.
Thank you. So that 52.4 million, you, you recognize, yeah, Luke can still check the work and then 52.4 million you recognized from the previous slide. We have to deduct from that the city's existing fund balance in impact fees because that money is available to spend on, on those projects. If we left it in, we would be over-collecting. We'd be double-charging for that which we've already charged. So the, the adjusted basis is 49.5 million. That divided by the 15,000 plus in growth in residential equivalents gives us a dollar amount per residential equivalent of a little over $3,000. We then convert that to the schedule based on the average occupancy by dwelling unit in the case of residential. So single-family residential, you see that resulting impact fee of 9,107.47. And for multifamily, because they have a lower average occupancy rate, 5,590.71 per dwelling unit. The charges shown for non-residential are based on typical employee counts per square foot of space for those different types of land uses. So that's how you apply those charges. If a restaurant applies for a building permit, they would be charged $1.70 per square foot of leasable square footage for the restaurant, for example, and likewise for those other land uses.
Councilmember Walsh?
Can you go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
So when I'm looking at this presentation from our December 10th, you basically, wish I could also show it. So you had the, the bubble initial impact at 68.6, less the 2.9 million impact fee fund balance, but then also less the outstanding parks debt of 13.3 million.
That's right.
So that's not included on here?
We, we, we agreed with a council member's point challenging whether we should be deducting the outstanding debt or not. So we are no longer deducting the, the outstanding debt.
Okay. We end up at 52.4-
Which is a coincidence.
Yeah, okay.
Believe it or not, yeah. So that's the proposed schedule. And then, well, before we look at the comparative information, a few thoughts on housing affordability. These are increases from the current charges for the residential, the residential impact fees, particularly single-family residential. What we found is that impact fees are obviously a crucial component of funding for park system improvements. They do affect the cost of new housing construction. When you look at the cost of housing, the price of housing, the increases proposed are relatively small compared to how construction costs have changed. And as a percentage of the cost of new dwelling units, they're relatively small. However, we do see, and we hear this a lot from the development community, that they impact the type of decisions they make about what type of residential units to build. They might build higher-end, single-family residences in order to fully recover their costs and make the profits that they need to make. So they will, they're unlikely to slow down residential development. We haven't seen that really anywhere, but they may impact the type of housing that's constructed in the city. To that end, we did feel we should at least point out, there is a section in the 8202-060, which is the Growth Management Act, that allows for exemptions or partial exemptions to be provided for low-income housing. If that, if those exemptions do not exceed 80% of the impact fee, then a city doesn't have to replace that revenue from an outside source of funding, which is what we would recommend that you do.
Councilmember Mertz has a question.
How would this work with the proposed TOD project?
I'm going to look for Andrea, who is not here. Next up is Wally, but I do believe on the TOD project that we're talking about full fee waivers. So I also just wanted to clarify something. Want to make sure that the council is clear that impact fees are collected, but also as some proposals, the developer themselves builds the park improvement and gets a credit against an impact fee. So it's not always us collecting money and putting it in the mitigation account. Sometimes the developer develops the park and his impact fee is little to nothing. So it depends on, there's a couple of different ways to do this.
That's right. And if they do construct, say, one of the projects on that list, you are required to provide them a credit for their cost of the improvement.
And I just want to make sure, because it's the new council members, that everybody's clear on that.
Right. Yeah. It does, it does have to be on the list.
Councilmember Mertz, we'll get you a better answer than my guess and we'll share it with the others.
Yeah, I mean, my question is around that remaining 20% must be paid backfilled from other than impact fee accounts. How would that work for us?
Yes. Oh, sorry. So in the case of a full waiver, then you do have to replace the 20% that would have, that you would not have had to replace it if it was a partial waiver. You saw that. Okay, so in the last year, the city has adopted updated fees as shown on this, on this table, except for parks. That's the one that has not been adopted yet. And you can see how the impact of all these changes would affect a single family, a new single-family residence, assuming adoption of the park impact fee. And the total of all those impact fees would go from about 17,500 to 23,000, 23,600 for a new single-family dwelling. That's an increase, as you see, of a little less than $6,100. It, one, one thing to point out here, the fire impact fee, the traffic impact fee and the parks impact fees are impact fees under the Growth Management Act. The other fees shown here are SEPA mitigation fees. They are authorized under a different statute and would only apply to projects which require SEPA, a SEPA process. They're calculated much the same as an impact fee, but I just did want to make that distinction. Only fire, traffic and parks are authorized under the Growth Management Act as impact So as you see at the bottom of the, at the bottom of the slide there, the previous fees using the average cost of a, of a single-family home in Issaquah, made up about 2.5% of the total value, now about 3.25%, assuming the parks was adopted as proposed. For a multifamily dwelling unit, that cost also goes up less so, about $1,800 total per dwelling unit. One thing you'll notice is the parks, the increase in the park impact fee for multifamily dwelling units is not as substantial as it is for single-family residential. And that's just because of the average occupancy rates having changed disproportionately since the last update. In order to calculate or estimate the percentage of a, of total value, as you see at the bottom there, 4% previously and 4.6%, we had to make some assumptions about a typical project. So we assumed a 300, a pretty large complex, 350 units and $110 million in value. For an office building, and these costs are, are, these fees are per square foot of leasable square footage, up about $1.66, looking at all the different fees. That parks fee actually goes down for an office building. And then looking at neighboring cities, we have single-family, multifamily, and then just the, the office building unit cost there. You'll see the single-family charge and multifamily charges both are, are among the highest, the highest in, among this group. But again, the multifamily rate per dwelling unit, not, not going up nearly as much.
Councilmember Mertz, followed by Councilmember Hall.
Can I ask why we have so many NAs on this in trying to compare with other municipalities?
They, not everyone charges park impact fees to non-residential customers. So in those cases, they're charging only residential development.
I just know that in our ongoing- I just know that in our ongoing conversation about trying to get more mixed use in the valley, it's, it's interesting that, that we would have, I mean, we potentially have the option of not collecting it on office buildings. We would choose, we would be lower than some of the other ones in here, like Redmond, for instance, lower than Redmond, but anyhow.
That's a very good point. Many cities use the collection or not collection of impact fees as an economic driver for a sector that they're trying to grow. Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, that answered my question. Thank you.
Okay. And let's keep going.
So, one, one final look at the proposed schedule of charges. And then, some information about current funding.
Great. Before we jump into Q and A, this slide seeks to, I think, respond to a question we've heard multiple times, both from you as council and the mayor, and tries to provide you some context, as we worked with finance, looking at our CIP and then looking at these proposed fees. And that question being, what, what portion of our park capital plan, revenue plan, would be supported by these impact fees? And so, what this graph represents is, as we look at our current adopted CIP, and with these proposed fees, it's anticipated about 27% of the revenue needed would be coming from park impact fees. The remaining percentage would need to be derived from other, other revenue sources. So, again, this is an attempt to, I think, provide that big picture and recognize, I think, as the Park Strategic Plan laid out, a lot of our reinvestment strategy, and therefore a lot of our capacity, is really found within our existing system. And so, there is this proportionality reality as we move forward. In terms of timing, next steps, I think we, we sort of highlighted this, that with the study session in December, we're back before you tonight requesting your authorization of the park impact fees. If you were to take action tonight, these new park impact fees would be effective March 11th. And I think with that, we'll close the staff report.
Thank you.
And for discussion.
Any additional questions? Council President Hunt?
On the change in how the parks debt was not included, could you give the rationale? And could you also give the change that was attributable in the impact fees due to that change?
Sure. So, the, the debt outstanding is, was all used to fund existing parks, parks that are already out there being used and enjoyed. So, we don't have to worry about double-charging folks for those, those costs. We don't have any existing parks in the impact fee. The impact fee is all about future-looking parks, and none of that debt will be used on those future parks. So, we don't need to make that deduction.
Could you come to the microphone direct?
So, in the, sorry, sorry, coaching, wrong approach, apologize. So, in the prior, I'm sort of asking a question here, and John can confirm, in the prior rate studies on December, there was a deduction of the, of that debt to this impact fee study through, I think, the conversation, Councilmember Winterstein brought this up. It was recognized, and the change is that that deduction does, is not given to this, to this rate study, correct?
Yeah.
So, the approximate net impact of this change is?
So, and Luke probably has that, but I can, I can show you on that one slide, which is right back here. So, where before, our initial impact fee cost basis was 60, 68 million. We deducted the impact fee fund balance, and we deducted the 13 million in debt to arrive at 52.4 as our impact fee cost basis. That was the previous study. Two things happened since then. Our beginning initial impact fee cost basis went down to 52.4, coincidental with, with the previous final number. But the reason that went down is because of that acknowledgement that the long-term project list, we had a lot of uncertainty about executing all of those long-term projects. And so, reduced the assumption that they would all be built within the planning period to 50%. So, the result of taking half of those long-term projects out was this initial cost basis of 52.4 million. We then take the impact fee fund balance out, we're no longer reducing it for the debt, and the resulting cost basis was the 49.5. So, two things happened to result to this. And then Luke can tell you what the resulting fee was.
Yours was specific to the debt portion removal, not the readjustment of the total project list?
It's because there's, there's a few moving pieces.
There's two moving pieces, yeah.
Okay. But you want the impact on, you want the, the impact on the impact fee, or do you just want to know the dollar amount of the debt outstanding?
The impact on the impact fee.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
We knew it was 13 million, yeah. Okay, you can, you can let me know. It's, I mean, it's just a percentage of, yeah, okay. We'll get that, we'll get that for you.
Okay, I did have two more questions. So, related to that, we had a public comment with a question in there about, that it does not seem accurate, it seems inaccurate not to include existing parks debt and new development fees, as residents and new developments are reasonably expected to use existing parks. So, it's my understanding that we can't use impact fees to fund existing parks, because it is only the new or only improvements, new improvements.
That's right.
By law.
That's right. The law is very explicit. We can't use impact fees other than to build growth-related facilities, facilities that they will benefit from, and we can't use them to correct existing deficiencies.
Did you also not clarify that if there was unused capacity in existing parks, that then the impact fees could be used to pay for that?
They would also, still have to be used to, to add capacity to the park system. And we would have to take into account how they were funded.
Right.
Which adds another layer of complexity to it.
Okay, thank you. The affordable housing impact fee question did come up, specific to a project, but I wondered if we could get just a brief, high-level overview of what the policy is. I know that we waive impact fees for affordable housing, so if we could get an overview of our current policy on that.
Wouldn't it be fair to say that we waive, but we have to pay them ourselves, that we have to use other revenue funds of our own? It's not that they go away, it's that they're not paid by the developer. We make those investments.
Okay. And, and this doesn't change that policy proposal? Okay. Okay. Last question I had was one, I believe that one conversation we had when this study was presented to council last time was around the timing of updates. And so, we had some other impact fees where they hadn't been updated in quite a while, and that we should get on a, you know, the consultants gave us a recommendation that we should get on a more regular schedule and more frequent schedule, because these rates could be changing, the CIP could be changing, projects on the list could be changing. And so, I wondered if we, what that recommended schedule is, and if we are going to follow it going forward.
So, our understanding is that recommendation was every three years that they be looked at to update. There's no statutory guidance on that, so that would be a city, that would be a city choice and a city policy.
And so, from the city's point of view, are we going to adhere to that? Any questions?
Yes, playing the role of park director and development services representative, yes. What we've talked about at a staff level is achieving that three-year renewal in terms of doing a rate study. Anytime we look to impact, or update an impact fee, that would mean getting, doing a rate study and performing that as the foundation. So, three years will be our, our goal.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Is there a motion?
I can, I can answer the 5%, the question.
We'll take it.
Okay. So, the counterbalancing effect is about 5%. So, the fees you're seeing tonight are about 5% less than the ones you saw in December as a result of no longer deducting the debt and the reductions made to the project list by moving out the, the half of the long-term projects.
Okay, thank you.
Motion?
President? I move to adopt ordinance number 2902 relating to impact fees, adopting the 2020 Park Impact Fee Study, amending the definition of park rate study in IMC 3.72.020J to reflect such adoption and thereby update the city's park impact fees to recognize changes in capital facilities needs and costs as provided in the 2020 study, and amending IMC 18.10.260B to add the 2020 study to the city's SEPA policies.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Mertz?
You know, sometimes we fret over some of these fees and worry about their, whether they're fair or whether we're growing them too fast. But then sometimes, it's the really easy decisions. And this, the law around impact fees makes it so clear that we have to show our homework. And it makes it so easy to talk to the community about why to do this, that I'm thrilled and I'm glad that we put the work into it. And it's one of the very, also rare occasions, where I don't mind us being a high-side outlier. It's, the, the services that we provide as a city are so important to our community. Growth does have such an impact on our community that pegging this knob to 11 makes me feel better, talking about the growth that we do have with the community. So, I will be an enthusiastic guest this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. I really appreciate taking another look at those long-term projects. I think, while this may not be appropriate in all cases, after we've had the community come together in this really excited park strategic plan and have all of these wish lists projects added to the CIP, it's really important to be strategic again about that when we're looking at the impact fees, so that we're not looking to increase our housing prices for, unnecessarily for something that may not happen within that time period. And so, I, I appreciate that adjustment. I think that makes a big difference, and I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2902 relating to impact fees, adopting the 2020 Park Impact Fee Study, amending the definition of park rate study in IMC 3.72.020J to reflect such adoption and thereby update the city's park impact fees to recognize changes in capital facility needs and costs as provided in the 2020 study, and demanding IMC 18.10.260B to add the 2020 study to the city's SEPA policies, signify by saying aye. As opposed? Thanks. I just want to do a special thanks to Jeff and DSD and our consultants. It is fantastic when you have a good conversation with the council, you listen to their concerns, you come back with great answers, and you adjusted and modified what you brought back based on what you had heard from them. The presentation was very, very clear and very understandable, and I want to thank you for all your work on it. It's very good. Next item is good of the order. Do councilmembers have anything for good of the order? Council President Hunt?
I have two items, actually. The first one is about Kokoni. So, in November of last year, council authorized execution of an ILA interlocal agreement for a Kokoni work group. And Kokoni are a kind of landlocked salmon. They're very special to our region, and they're also, the Lake Smamish Kokoni population is very close to extinction. So, this group is going to be moving ahead. They will have a member of the committee that will be appointed, as well as an alternate, and the alternate can be elected or non-elected. The first meeting of the Kokoni Management Committee is anticipated for March 30th from 1:30, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., and the location is not yet determined. Alan Quinn will be serving as the city's representative on a staff committee of the Kokoni work group, and this committee is expected to only meet two times per year. So, because this committee is a new committee, it's also very closely related to the Wyra 8 Salmon Recovery Council. And in fact, we've been getting updates about Kokoni routinely during our Salmon Recovery Council meetings. I think it makes sense for the same person to serve on both, so that person is currently me. But we also do want to appoint a alternate, and so if you are interested in the alternate, please, or you have ideas about who would be good for that, they can be elected or non-elected, then please let me know. So, that's my first.
Before you move on on that one, they are anxious to get names as well. So, I believe it's David Fujimoto who's submitting names, and so we'll make sure that he has Council President Hunt's. But if you're interested in it, please let us know.
Okay. And I have one other item for good of the order, which is, the leadership team discussed a question that had been raised earlier by Councilmember Walsh regarding the, our leadership's goals for the coming year. And so, we have a list that we put together. It's, it's fairly short, but we wanted to bring it up for discussion this evening. And the, the list has four items. The first one, and they're sort of paired between a goal and an action. The first one is that all councilmembers feel that they have the information they need to make decisions. That's the goal. And so, we will, the action would be to facilitate timely answering of questions and ensure information is getting to the whole council. Then the second action, second goal-action pair is that we are aligning our work with the strategic plan. So, council agendas and work items are allowed to align with the strategic plan. We want to work to prioritize agenda items and focus energy with the strategic plan in mind. Third is that the community knows that the council values their input and that their engagement is important. And so, for this, we will be responding to council correspondence. And so, I will, as the council president, be responding, but then councilmembers can always also respond directly with additional feedback if they so choose. And then the fourth one, which is the sort of more complicated one, is that we had a discussion about that we, we want to have, when we look back on the year, we want to be able to say we've moved the needle in all of the areas of the strategic plan. And so, the way we thought we could do this is, we want to support councilmembers that have specific interests in taking actions to move the needle in different strategic plan areas. And we thought we would divide this up. So, for the strategic plan goal areas would then be as follows: mobility, RAY, goal and development, HUNT, environmental stewardship, HUNT, social and economic vitality, HUNT, city leadership and services, RAY, and infrastructure, RAY. So, we thought we would divide that up, so we could divide and conquer and move the needle on some of our strategic goal areas. And that, that was what we came up with. Do you have anything you would?
No, I thought, I thought it was, I thought it was great, and I really love the idea of embracing the strategic plan as our guiding document. And by the council president and I breaking that up, we're able to kind of focus in areas and help move things forward. And at the same time, we'll be talking about everything across the board, but it's to provide some focus so we can get things done. And one of the things that we really talked about wanting to do is to start to help to shape the overall legislative agenda for the city and to dovetail that legislative agenda with the strategic plan that we worked so diligently on last year.
You mean regional? You mean regional agenda or legislative agenda?
Well, our city's legislative agenda. So the work that the council is doing, so not necessarily regionally, but possibly regionally if appropriate, not legislative, like state legislative, unless that's appropriate, but really focusing on what do we need to do here at this day for the city of Issaquah to really move the needle on these really six important focus areas.
And I'm sure you're opening it up for comments. Councilmember DeMichele.
On the communications piece, and I totally agree with what you've laid out there, my only caveat would be in situations like the coronavirus, where we're dealing with a regional emergency, and I do think it's really important that we put out consistent information. And Councilmember President Hunt and I had a little bit of discussion about this on email in regard to answering an email that came in. And the flooding would be another example, where we really need consistent information going out, and all of us answering might lead to us giving different answers. So I'm just wondering if the council president and the mayor could coordinate and say, on this particular issue, we're going to let the mayor or the council president be the spokesperson for us, and then everything else, we can answer, you know, as you've laid out, that we're able to answer. But it just, there are certain times when you want to make absolutely sure that the information is vetted and clear and consistent.
That is a great point. So typically, if something is addressed to city council and mayor and it has an operational taste to it, then I take the lead in answering. And if it has a policy flavor to it, the council president does. But we both use the communications staff to help us prepare talking points for it, and there are times when those talking points can be distributed to you as well, even if you haven't answered an email, just so that when you're out in the community, you have the same consistent information that we have. Because you're absolutely right, we want to be sending a consistent message, whether it's by email, phone, or just a conversation on the street. So thank you for bringing that up. If you feel like we have somehow missed the boat and the council president has answered or I have answered, and we don't have all the talking points in, just poke us, and we will make sure that all seven of you get good talking points to share. Councilmember Goodman.
I want to thank you for raising this at the good of the order and sharing your goals with your fellow councilmembers and with the public. I think that is, number one, it's, I think it's, as leadership has been evolving, you know, that's one more evolution, and I really appreciate that. And it also means that as you publicly declare those as your goals for the year, that means that you have us and other people who are holding you accountable, so it's a courageous thing to do. And not only courageous, but I think it also shows your commitment to leadership as not just, you know, talking with the administration once a week. It's a working job. It takes a lot of extra time to be in leadership, and so I appreciate that extra step that you're taking. And I also appreciate all the very thoughtful responses that you're providing to the communications that we get. I think that's very important, and I think the community, I know the community appreciates that.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Are there any other comments?
I'll just agree with that completely. I think the emails that have gone out in response have been very well crafted and very clear and very, I'm sure, very appreciated, so, yes.
And I would like to just add one thing to it. I was grinning ear to ear as you guys are talking about the strategic plan. I think the council, the prior councils, those that are sitting here, you did an amazing job listening to the community and crafting something that we can use, and to hear that that's how the leadership is divided up, divide and conquer on that list, I am so proud of you. I think that is great. Thank you. I just was grinning like crazy as you guys were talking. That is wonderful. If there's nothing else for good of the order, I am going to talk a little bit about some upcoming council meetings. March 10th, there is a council study session at 6:30, and potential agenda items are, I'm going to be providing for the first time a mayor's housing overview. This is a subject that has got enormous attention and enormous complexity, and so I'll be speaking for a short period of time at the beginning. You will also be hearing potentially about the Housing Strategy Work Plan Council update, a regional coalition for housing, ARCH, update, Title 18 Land Use Code update. This is the Ad Hoc Planning Committee report out that the council president had mentioned earlier, and potentially imposing a local sales and use tax for affordable and supportive housing. On March 16th, at the regular city council meeting at 7:00 p.m., the potential agenda items are Old Town Land Use Code amendments. So there will not be an executive session after our meeting since we held it earlier today, and we are now adjourned at 9:36.